It's Monday, July 28, 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and start the planning board meeting, and we'll begin with roll call. Board member Ruiz, can you lead us? Oh, I pledge allegiance. That's what I meant to say.
Yes, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to roll call.
Yes, good evening. Board member Ham.
Here.
Member Ruiz.
Here.
Board member Ariza.
Present.
Board member Wang.
Here.
And President Cisneros.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Board members Sahaba is absent, as well as board member Sue.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to any agenda changes from staff or the board seeing none? Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting for any public comments for anything related not to the agenda this evening. You can speak up to three minutes. Do we have any folks?
Doesn't look like we have any speakers.
Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and close Agenda Item 3 and move on to the consent calendar. We have a few draft meeting minutes here. I wonder if we approve them one by one since there's various absences, so maybe we'll just go down the line for each one. For 4A, any comments if not a motion?
I abstained because I was in here that day.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just note, I don't think we have a quorum for that one.
No quorum, okay.
We'll carry that one over again.
Okay, great. And we'll move on to 4B, June 9. I think I was absent.
Correct. But the rest of you can vote for it?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
I think I was. Was I gone?
It looks like you were there.
I was there, okay.
June 9, yeah.
Okay, there was one meeting I missed, I know.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve the meeting minutes for June 9.
I second it.
Okay, motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all abstain. So 4B passes.
Okay.
And then we have Agenda Item 4C. This is June 23.
I abstain. I wasn't there.
You don't have a quorum.
No quorum.
I think that was the one I missed.
Okay, got it.
I believe so.
Okay. And I guess we'll roll that over as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then we'll go ahead and close the consent calendars. Any public comments for the consent calendar?
No, no public comment.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda item, which is to review the 2433 Mariner Square Loop project.
Good evening. My name is Steve Buckley. I'm the Planning Services Manager, and I'll be presenting this item tonight, as well as serving as your secretary. So this item is before you for action. This is a design review application for a new development at the Webster and Posey Tubes area. I'll be going through the permit application, some of the planning and zoning considerations, the SEQA exemption, some of the design review considerations, and then conditions of approval. The applicant team is also here tonight, and I've distributed some public comments, as well as some revised conditions of approval, which I'd be happy to go over, as well as public work staff is here, and the city attorney is here remotely. This project is a multifamily infill project consistent with the housing element. The site was rezoned into 2022 with the housing element adoption and implementation. It is now zoned M2 PD with a multifamily combining district. The proposal is to demolish the existing four commercial buildings on the site and construct an eight-story residential building with 356 units. That would include 54 affordable units in a distribution similar to the market rate units in terms of the studios, one bedrooms, and two bedrooms. There would be 283 parking spaces within the building in a wrap configuration, three-story concrete podium with units around it facing the street and above forming interior courtyards. The neighboring lot, which is owned by Caltrans, it's the surface over the Webster Tube, is currently leased by the existing businesses and would continue to be leased by this project as overflow parking, as well as their trash storage area and sort of ancillary support functions like an extra fire lane. The building would be about 85 feet tall to the parapet, 90 feet, given that there's also some fill that would have to happen on the site to bring it above the floodplain and sea level rise. So I'm calling it 90 feet from the existing grade. As I mentioned, the Caltrans lot would be part of the site, and there would be some trees that would be preserved on the site. Most of them are olives and other decorative trees, but there's a small grove of redwoods at one corner, and this project has been designed to accommodate preservation of several of those trees. This is the site outlined in blue, showing the parking lot, which is the Caltrans lot, as well as the four office buildings facing Mariner Square Road and Mariner Square Loop. The blue arrow shows the next view that I'll be showing you. It's sort of the perspective, kind of from the back of the shopping center where there's a Target, and there's the roof plan next to that, showing the interior and corner courtyards. That would include resident amenities up on the third floor. So that view from that perspective would be like this. And similar treatments would be on all of the different sides of the building, and I think the applicant will go over that. But this is the material mix and color mix that they're proposing with balconies recessed, as well as projecting, and sort of a cornice line on some of the elements. As I mentioned, the general plan and housing element designated this site as a mixed-use multifamily with a 30-dwelling unit minimum. The idea is that on large sites like this, we want to make the most of them and encourage the most infill housing that we can get, given that we have a RENA number of over 5,000 units to accomplish in the next five years now. And so this is one step towards accomplishing that goal by going well beyond that minimum. The height is set by the underlying district, so when you have a multifamily combining district, you then refer to the underlying district for some of the development standards, and that includes the height and some of the coverage and setbacks. And so they're complying with that height limit. And the other component of the multifamily combining district is it makes housing residential development a by right development. And so it's really not a use permit where we're debating what should happen here. We're really just looking at some of the design elements. And in that situation, we're really looking at the objective design standards, which we've adopted to implement the housing element again. And so we're really looking to just make sure that they've met the minimums. And with the Housing Accountability Act, we're very limited in our discretion in that we can't really deny the project or reduce the density without some really special findings that are rarely met in terms of health and safety impacts to the community. And those aren't just sort of aesthetic impacts, they're true health and safety impacts. So, given that, we are also looking at a SEQA exemption. So there's no formal environmental review required for two reasons. It's an infill project, and so the Class 32 applies. It's consistent with the zoning, meets the size limits. It's adequately served by urban utilities. And in this case, the applicant actually went ahead and prepared some technical studies to demonstrate that there would be no impacts to habitat, traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. So it clearly qualifies for the Class 32 exemption. There's also, because it's only design review, an exemption under state law and case law that says that if you're looking at only design issues, there really aren't any environmental issues. And so the by right development doesn't implicate SEQA. So all of these findings are in your packet. We've outlined each of these considerations, including, as I mentioned, the habitat, the traffic, the noise, and so on, with these technical studies by Farr and Pierce, Building with a Rodkin, and by the arborist. And then similarly, there's no other sort of special considerations like hazardous materials or historic resources. So finally, we need to just make our design review findings. And so I've outlined here, you need to find that it's consistent with the general plan and zoning and our objective design findings, that it's just generally compatible. But that's, it's a tricky one because it's, that's still kind of subjective. So we're really looking at these objective design standards. So we're looking at kind of urban infill. Does it just basically fit? And in that case, there's a checklist that the applicant filled out, and so they've addressed site design issues like parking and landscaping are properly screened, building mass and articulation. They have the required permeability in terms of windows and balconies, and they break up the blank walls and flat surfaces. And then in terms of the entries and canopies, those are all provided according to the design guidelines. And then some of the other details, like the siding and windows, are, they have the correct variety of siding materials in the right places, and they provide balconies that are recessed and projecting, and they've screened their roof equipment. So in each of these sort of objective guidelines, they've complied with those standards as well. So based on all of that, we're recommending that you conduct a public hearing, that you review and comment on any design refinements that wouldn't necessarily, you know, affect the feasibility of the project, and then adopt the resolution with the findings and conditions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much for that overview. Are we going to be hearing from the applicant as well?
Yeah, I think you could do that and then take comments.
Yeah. If that pleases the board, yeah, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant next. Thank you.
Great. Could you go back just one slide? Great. Good evening, honorable commissioners. Pleasure to be here with you this evening. I'm Stephen Siri, co-managing principal of the Martin Group. We are the real estate developer and applicant for the project. We're really excited to be here. This project, we've been working on actually since 2023, so shortly after the housing element was put into place. And it's been a very thoughtful process, working with staff and various community members that have provided comments through the way. And we would just like to commend the City of Alameda for putting together a really great housing element and zoning plan. We developed throughout the Bay Area, and having a clear roadmap really helps streamline our various processes. Just by way of a quick introduction on our team. The Martin Group is founded in 1984, responsible for 24 million square feet of development over a 40-year history. We're highly passionate about addressing not only the state, regional, and local housing crisis. And we've partnered with an excellent design team, BDE Architects, the Gazardo Partnership, and CBG as civil engineers, who have extensive experience in Alameda. Just to provide a little additional context, just orienting us with the site, as Stephen mentioned, sitting directly adjacent to the Webster and Posey Tubes. What really drove us to this site in the first place was just the diversity and close proximity of various surrounding uses, including existing residential, retail, commercial, and transit. And in our minds, that really creates a great live-work-play sort of community and ties in very well to support a lot of the local businesses. Just touching on a few of the project statistics. Try to go through it quickly since Stephen covered some of these, but 356 apartment units, mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, average square footage of 812 square feet. So they're well-designed, and we've included several elements, even including work-from-home features, dedicated workspaces. 54 of the affordable units at a very low, low, and moderate levels. And then mix of in-garage parking, off-site excess parking, given the close proximity to AC Transit, Alameda Express Ferry, and then all the bikeability and walkability components. Parking spaces may not be needed, but we do think it's nice to have. From a sustainability perspective, this is a big corporate focus of ours for not only making lasting impacts to, you know, our community with housing, but doing it in a sustainable way. So the inclusion of EV parking stalls, really leveraging the sustainable element of the site through walking, biking, alternative modes of transportation, and then a variety of different sustainable in-design features. You know, in addition to this, we'll have committed to renewable energy and solar panels. From a community benefits perspective, we think that this project really exemplifies smart growth. And, you know, there's a number of numerous tangible results here in terms of economic benefits over a 10-year period from property taxes, permits, impact fees, in terms of the RENA goals. You know, for one project to provide up to 6% of that goal with five years remaining is quite meaningful with inclusionary affordable units included, the addition of, you know, over 600 residents supporting local retailers and various employers in the area. 89 new trees, and we received some feedback through this design process. There's seven redwoods that are on the corner of the project. And initially, we were going to remove two, but we had received a lot of community feedback that preserving all seven was important. So working hand-in-hand with our design team, we were able to make that work while not losing any units in coordination with our arborist. And then 374-foot protected bike lane, which is a Class 4 bike lane, which will be a fantastic addition, I think, to the community. Stephen had touched on this a little bit before. Two-story existing office buildings. As the housing element's been laid out, we really have proposed what we believe fits within the four corners of the box of the city's zoning code and design standards. And then just wanted to highlight again the existing surface parking lot under a lease from Caltrans. This is, this, the surface parking lot sits right above the Webster Tube, so it can, it can never really be developed as critical infrastructure. But I believe a nice, a nice element of that as well is it really creates a much greater setback from some of the existing residential that you can see on the west, on the left side. And with that, I'd like to leave some time for Ian Murphy, who is our architect at BDE.
Hi, thanks so much for all your time. Ian Murphy with BDE Architecture. Been working with Stephen for a number of years on the project. I just wanted to go over quickly kind of the context of the project and what we're next to here. So directly due west, we have three-story, single-family townhouse projects. To the north of us, on the upper left of this slide, you can see that we have three stories senior assisted living flanking either side of the street before we get to the marina and the yacht parking there beyond. There's a relatively new project directly due east, which is the self-storage project, the large white building here. And then to our south, we have a series of small offices in the one, one-large to two-story range, as well as Target to the southwest. These are all really important to us because they kind of set up the context for how we designed the building, and we look for, you know, what are our neighbors going to look like in context of this building's design? The program of the building itself, we have, in this slide, we're turned 90 degrees clockwise from the last. We have Mariner Square Loop on the left-hand side and Mariner Square Drive on the bottom of the page. We have a lobby to greet anyone coming to the project adjacent to the vehicular entry on Mariner Square Loop, and also to pull people inwards from the shopping district that's kitty-corner in that direction. We have a secondary lobby off of Mariner Square Drive that's nestled inside of the larger amenity space, including the mail and cowork and fitness, as well as substantial first-of-two bike rooms. There are quite a few units that face the street here, but they are raised up partly in due, in part because of the floodwater 100-year requirement. So we're up off of the street on Mariner Square Drive and Mariner Square Loop in both cases. And so you'll see each entry. We've paid special attention to lifting people up to our entries in a very nice landscaped environment. This is the second story. Our parking garage continues up, and we wrap the entirety of the garage with units so that you're not faced at the second level with any open parking. You have eyes looking outward, a more handsome and residentially appropriate facade, as well as some double-height amenities for greater street presence on that corner. This is our third and final level of our podium of our Type 1, and in large part, it's a continuation of what we saw below. And then we have a fairly expansive landscaped podium with a large internal courtyard that's a little bit quieter. And then we have our open pool deck that faces towards the street and adds a lot of front-facing articulation to the building, giving us lots of opportunity for a more interesting design in the more public face. And this is the typical floor. This is what stacks all the way up until we get to our roof deck, where we had the opportunity to have a small sky lounge and roof deck looking back towards the predominant city skylines. So this is the rendering, looking up Mariner Square Drive as if you were kind of at the storage center or a little bit further down Mariner Square Drive from the storage center, looking back towards some of our amenity spaces. Above that amenity space is that pool deck where you get a hint of activation of people and potentially plants up there. Maybe there's some lighting in the evening to give it a very interesting street presence. Stephen did a great job of talking about how the objective design standards regulate for us to break the building massing down. So we have a series of decks that recess back, and we have the building broken into smaller, more digestible chunks. And because this is such a long facade, we have a series of corner elements that hold the main street corners, as well as the corners where the building returns back onto itself. Similar to the roof deck at the pool, there's the sky lounge, which pulls your eyes upwards to the cornices and to the canopy that's proposed, looking back westward. This is the other corner on Mariner Square Drive, also Mariner Square Loop on the left-hand side, looking back towards what would be Target, kind of in that distance. This corner of the building was actually redesigned from what was originally proposed, and the footprint was reduced in order to save more of those redwoods. So while this is a massive building in comparison to what else is built in the area, these redwoods are going to greatly soften and buffer this south-facing side of the building and provide a little bit of visual protection. So right behind us would be the tube entry structure. And then this is the view coming as if you were standing kind of next to Target, about to cross the street. And we have our main signage element above one of our lobbies, kind of pulling you towards the pedestrian and vehicular access point. And then you can see the building turns off of rectilinear axis a little bit at the next corner, kind of indicating another important moment. I'm actually going to go back a second and just mention that the building materials are a mix of stucco and different smooth fiber cement plank boards. And then the base is highlighted with predominantly two stories of brick to kind of bring a pedestrian element that sort of references the building across the street, being the offices that would be on the right side of this image, so that there's a little bit of a relationship there, both in scale and material and texture. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Colin Bly, our landscape architect, and he can say a little bit about the landscape plan.
Hi, I'm Colin Bly with the Gazardo Partnership. I will be relatively brief. Talking about the site design and landscape design for the project. It's a tight site. There were a lot of constraints that we worked through and worked out with the things that Stephen mentioned earlier with the Caltrans parking lot. You know, it's over the tunnel, so you can't plant any trees there. The building needed to be expressed upward to stay out of high-tide elevational changes. And of course, we've been talking about the redwood trees at the corner as well, that we've worked with the design team and our project arborists to be able to preserve those trees and, and all their glory. So for the landscape design for the site, there is a new bike lane and sidewalk along Mariner Square Drive. That should enhance the pedestrian element to the site and bringing you back into the main entry, which is, you know, at the lobby and leasing center with the, the pool courtyard deck that's right above that. So that's a really interesting space. The other sides of the project, we've tried to plant as best we can to anchor the project to the ground with, with new planting and trees. We installed a dog park back on the parking lot side. And I think we have a slide for the main entry here, too. But basically, the whole perimeter is planted, and we've picked up the grading challenges for getting up into the building. At the site main entry, it was sort of an interesting solution as we had to get everybody up to that first level of the leasing area. And so we were able to create this little plaza space that both picks upstairs and ramps and integrates planting into all of that as well. So it doesn't just feel like, you know, a grand stair that's bringing you up to those areas. At the podium level, again, that pool courtyard is, is pretty amazing. It's looking out towards the marina and downtown Oakland. There's a roof deck as well on the top floor that looks out that same direction. But the pool courtyard sort of activates the club and lounge spaces, so that's a little more active. And then as you move up to the left in the plan here, it gets into more quieter spaces, and we've created sort of rooms of different activities and elements that the residents can use. And I've been here before, and I know that there are no palm trees on this plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? All right, great. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'll bring it back to the board for any clarifying questions before we open up for public comment. Anyone would like to, yeah, board member Ham.
Thank you, and thank you, staff and applicant for presentation. I want to start off with this question for staff. You just provided us what a copy of the revised condition of approval. I'll just quickly glance through it. And I know a lot of the conditions are technical in manner, but there's quite a bit of revisions. Can you walk us through the significant revisions that should be brought to the board's attention? So, yes, this is a redlined and strikeout version, and so the hiccup with doing that inward without, like, doing a whole bunch of manual edits is sometimes if you move something, it looks like it's new or stricken, and really it just moved. So I'll point out, a couple of these are just moved, but mostly they're related to, if you look, number forty-one through forty-nine, those are related to maps and easements. This is four buildings and four lots right now, and so this is about, these conditions are about combining those lots, so you can put one big building on all four lots, there has to be one lot, and then arranging the easements so that the fire trucks can get in and the trash trucks can get through, and things like that, and removing old easements and putting in new easements. So that's all that this is really about, forty-one through forty-nine.
So so I assume what it'll be a lot merger of some sort that could be approved by the city engineer, or is it a staff-level approval?
Correct, correct. So that that's all staff-level technical stuff. And then if you go down to forty-two, it's stricken on the TDM plan, but actually, that's one of those that's just moved and restated someplace else. Same with the forty-three, the roadway improvements. So when we get down to fifty-four, it's talking about improvements. This is one where we didn't, previously, we were referring to the drawings and the engineers' study, but instead, we also added some very specific language about what we really want them to do for frontage improvements. So we kind of narrowed the scope and got really specific. So here, it just talks about those street improvements that the developer will do, and they've agreed to this. So we've sort of already negotiated the bike lane and the sidewalk and the turning lanes and things like that. So that's all what that is specifying. Fifty-six is about the flood elevation, just making that very specific as well, so there's no confusion. And then, let's see, seventy is new, I guess there's there's a new water quality requirement regarding PCBs, and so that we added that back in. And I think that's pretty much it. Oh, and then, oh, eighty-two through eighty-six is related to the electrical power supply system amp, and these are sort of condensed, amp typically has about twenty-five conditions they want to put on a project, but it's it's so technical that it's kind of really hard to follow. So instead, we just said, follow the amp standards, and, you know, get the permits and do what they tell you to do with engineering studies. So that's that's really all this is trying to communicate. So it's more of a condensed version. And I think that's pretty much it. The rest, like I said, is kind of stricken because it was either moved around or replaced by something more relevant.
Okay, thank, I appreciate the explanation. So the landscaping bust-up and street furniture revisions pretty much are, are just relocating the conditions someplace else?
Yeah.
So they're not really substantive changes, just just moved conditions?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I do have a question, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I do have a question about the parking lot tree requirement. I see a condition, condition number ten, that says, "Street trees shall be planted per city standards, one for every four parking spaces." But then I hear the applicant saying they're not able to plant street trees in that parking lot because of the existing Caltrans tube or tunnel. So how how will this condition be met?
Well, I guess it it's met only to the extent that there's a parking area on the property that is being redeveloped, because they're not changing the Caltrans lot. So they actually do have a little drop-off area, deliveries and a few parking spaces for the leasing office on their property that's not within the garage, and so that area will have trees.
But there is this requirement, though. So I guess, is there some alternative way to meet the the number of street tree requirement, perhaps planting it elsewhere, along, say, along the perimeter of the building to to further screen or soften the building, since the parking lot will not be able to accommodate landscaping? Is that an option that we have?
I think the landscape architect showed how they've already pretty well planted the perimeter of the site. Again, they're not changing the existing Caltrans parking lot.
Do we have the option of, the trees are pretty small trees. Their option to require some taller columnar trees that are more in scale with the height of the building, so that it might further soften the building over time? The species are pretty small.
Yeah, I suppose so. I mean, I think they're mostly sort of vertical trees. I I will just comment, you know, the parking lot tree requirement is also to deal with the heat island effect. When you when you add pavement, you also add trees just to kind of counterbalance.
Yeah.
I think in this case, again, it's it's an existing condition.
Yeah, it's also meant, I think, meet an urban forest requirement, too. So not just shading, you know, and heat island, but also just increasing the urban canopy, too, so could be a trade-off, given this is a situation where they can't park, plant parking lot trees. And we just want want to ask about that. Let's see, I do have, and some of your questions were answered, so I appreciate the applicant answering it. The TDM requirement, this is maybe a question for staff and and the applicant. I see the TDM plan proposing like a two-to-nine percent trip reduction, maybe for staff. Is for these type of projects, does the city have a goal for trip reduction for residential projects?
Not that I know of. I will say that the TDM plan was prepared by the consultant that often works for the city, and I believe he's actually available online. But I think this is a pretty typical range of effectiveness.
Okay, there's a no-city goal, okay. So then I also see that probably the most significant reason for variation between two and nine percent is dependent on if the applicant can obtain the Caltrans parking lot to increase the parking ratio to one-point-two-five, up from point-eight. So I would assume that would probably mean the percentage drops down as an incentive to reduce vehicle trips. So I guess a question for the applicant is, where are you with negotiating with Caltrans for getting the rights to use the Caltrans parking lot? And how might you might modify the TDM plan to might might perhaps further increase trip reductions if you were to get that Caltrans lot? Because otherwise, it seems like you're only proposing about a two percent reduction in vehicle trips.
Yeah, it's a good question. So so the Caltrans parking lot is currently under a lease with the property owner, so it's currently providing excess parking to the existing office. And then we've been in negotiations and discussions with Caltrans on further even extending this lease. They have been very supportive, certainly with statewide housing goals, and then being a state agency, and then paired with its parking lot on top of the tube, which can never be redeveloped. So so those those, you know, are, we believe very soon here, as it's been shared with us by Caltrans, that we'll have an extension of that that lease. So, you know, with that, that's, yeah, I believe with the with the buffer of reduction, that's that's where it comes from. You know, at the same time, too, we do believe that projects, you know, central location, certainly for walking, bikability, public transit, there's a lot of naturally occurring alternative modes of transportation and options that will be utilized. So I I hope that answers your question in terms of, you know, some of the various...
I guess partially, I guess my question is, with additional Caltrans parking lot, it sounds like, quite honestly, the amount of trip reductions is pretty minimal, maybe like two, three percent or so. So I'm just wondering, are, is that the developer think of maybe a little bit more aggressive measures to further reduce the number of trips from this project?
Yeah, I think, Stephen, we have the traffic engineer, it might be good for him to...
Sam Tobibnia is available. I'll also just note, I, well, I'll let him speak. I I think maybe there's a misreading of of what he was trying to communicate.
So Sam, I, you're allowed to talk now?
Great, good evening, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, Sam Tobibnia with Baron Peers, we're transportation consultants and prepared the TDM plan for this project. Just a couple of clarifications for your questions. One, the city does not have a goal for TDM plans and how much trip reduction is required. And then specifically to your question about the effectiveness of the parking and whether the providing the Caltrans parking, how much that affects the TDM, that we had overall two-to-nine percent effectiveness for the TDM plan in reducing automobile trips for the project, and from that, for that two-to-nine percent, about two-to-six percent was for the limited parking. And that also accounts for the for for including the Caltrans parking supply. It's basically with the Caltrans parking supply, it's about one-point-two parking spaces per unit, which in comparison to the average for the city of Alameda, which is about one-point-four. So even that's, there's about a fifteen percent difference there, and that's what accounts for that two-to-six percent.
Yeah, I guess I understood that. I was just just wondering, since the six percent is probably assuming a much, a more aggressive parking reduction of point-eight parking space per unit, whether there were other measures that the developer might have been considering to 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 offset the additional parking spaces to try to up the percentage as much as possible?
Yeah, and again, it's with the excess parking, you know, it's maybe, I don't think it's likely that all of the parking spaces are going to get and end up getting utilized based on our unit mix and the project location. It provides us the option to have that excess parking. My my understanding is the city act does not have a a parking, you know, there's no minimum parking requirement, so, yeah.
Okay, and then, oh, just one real quick question. The affordable housing unit, you mentioned fifty-four units for affordable housing. What's the breakdown between the very low and low units or moderate units? What's, I'm just curious, but what the breakdown is?
It's 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 in line with the city's inclusionary housing requirement. I think it's about four percent and some change for very low, four percent, some change for low, and then the balance is like eight percent for moderate.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Board Member Ruiz. Actually, Board Member Hump, you brought up a good, you know, making think of a question, and this is a question for staff. Just want to clarify, this is a design review session, right?
Yes.
So so all the other reports, such as TDM, you know, size, transportation, and impact analysis, air quality and noise assessment, those are all provided as a courtesy? Or can we comment on it, because this is a design review only, we're not questioning the, I just want to know what the purview of this board is?
Yeah, that's a good question.
So they're provided as backup to the Class thirty-two CQ exemption to demonstrate that there's not significant or unusual impacts in those topic areas. And so that's one CQ exemption, and as I mentioned, there's another independent CQ exemption just for design review. So you actually don't even need to necessarily consider the Class thirty-two and those technical studies, but we sometimes do, you know, belt and suspenders and and double down.
Okay, but again, the purview of this board is design review of the building and not of TDM or or the the right to even have this building on site?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I just want to clarify that. And also, I would like to inform the board that I have met with the applicant prior to the planning board meeting. Thank you.
Could I just ask a follow-up question to what Commissioner Ruiz mentioned? You mentioned that there's a CQ exemption for making the exemption finding. Is that something that that is, that the planning board needs to weigh in? I'm not talking about the design review exception, the CQ exemption, where you're providing us with the technical studies. Is that, is the board need to decide whether they believe the CQ exemption is met based on these technical studies? Or is the board's purview strictly regarding the exemption for design review? Just...
You could merely make the finding under McCorkle, which is the case law, that says "Design review is exempt from CQ," end of sentence. You could also say, "We believe that's true, and we believe it also meets the Class thirty-two exemption with the technical studies." But you don't have to. You could just stop at the first...
At just the design review? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, but if there were questions related to the Class thirty-two infill exemption, like, we also have the purview to maybe challenge that, if...
Challenge it in what sense?
As like questions related to, maybe some of the studies or findings related to the air quality or transportation or negative impacts.
I suppose you could. I mean, it would only be relevant if you didn't find that this was merely a design review application. If it's merely a design review application, which the zoning says it is, then the CQ exemption for design review really is all you need.
Okay.
If you're questioning other things, then you just don't need to make that finding, and it's still exempt.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And any other clarifying questions? Board Member Ariza?
Thank you for the presentation to staff and to the applicant. I also want to disclose, I met I met with the applicant before to understand the project. I wanted to ask about sustainability, is the project doing anything beyond Cal Green?
The project intends to be code compliant, and and the likely reality is that it'll be submitted after the beginning of the next new year for permit, which would trigger the new and upcoming code, which is above and beyond even what the requirements are now. There are things that may end up exceeding the minimum requirement, and we're looking into that in terms of the efficiencies of our mechanical and plumbing systems, and some of the stormwater treatment, you know, may exceed the minimum. We may choose to exceed the minimum on the solar PV quantity, even though it is quite large now for these types of projects, after doing our SARAH calculation for the area that can be converted for solar PV. We may go beyond that, but we're not committed to doing that yet.
I see, so it's, you're considering it, I understand, thank you. I guess my other question is related to the units that are on the first floor. If I understand correctly, the only way to access those units is from inside the building, even though they are on the ground floor?
That's right. So the units will be accessed from the internal corridor. That's pretty much necessary on any site that has any grade to make them accessible or adaptable. This site has between three and five feet of grade change between the level that we have to have the floor at to meet the flood requirements and the changing grade of the street. And it wasn't reasonable to do individual stoops and get the stormwater requirements we need and all the various grading requirements that we need.
Okay, and so I just want to understand what what I see as lines in front of those units on the first floor, is it just like landscaping, or it appears something like a planter or something?
There's a combination of raised planters to help... There's a combination of raised planters to help kind of step up to that elevated height that the building has to be at, as well as in-ground planting and bermed planting and in-ground stormwater planting. So there's a number of different types of planting at different heights to kind of build up to that flood elevation.
Okay. My other question is, how will parking be assigned? It does seem like there's a lot of parking, but I'm not sure what the thought is on how the parking is assigned to the units.
Stephen, take that one.
Yeah, the, the parking will be unbundled. So that'll be for an additional charge. And based on, you know, availability and who elects for what parking space, then typically after, you know, thereafter, people will park, you know, by their, by their units. In terms of the actual assignment of, you know, if you're renting this particular space, we haven't finalized that at this point.
Right. So it's more like you, you can opt to not have a parking space?
Correct. Yeah, it's unbundled. So in order to get a parking stall, you'll have to pay an additional parking fee.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
No, we have to wait till public comment, please. Thank you for waiting your turn. Any other questions now? I had a question regarding, and also for disclosure, met with the applicant to better understand the project. Where is it? I had a question. It was mentioned that, I guess, the first four levels might be more noisy. So I was just wondering about what, maybe because of the parking, the wraparound parking garage. So maybe the applicant can answer, like, are there, yeah, some design techniques to help mitigate any noise with that?
Just to clarify, this is noise that would be experienced by tenants in their apartment that you're concerned about?
That's what I thought I heard in the overview, that it's like, oh, it's going to be quieter from the upper levels. So I just was wondering to try to understand where that was coming from.
In my presentation, I only meant to say that in terms of the programming of the outdoor active space in the courtyards, one would be more active and lively, which would be the pool deck facing out towards the street. And the programming of the courtyard that's internal would have less loud activities. So it's a choice to have less units enclosing something where there might be activities when people want to be resting in their home.
Okay.
But there are lots of design tricks and assemblies that we use to make sure that the interior comfort of the units are maintained and that they're quiet, comfortable living spaces.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I misunderstood. So thank you. And my other question, I was just curious, and maybe this was in the site plan, like where the affordable housing units are integrated in the project?
I don't believe we have a map of that, Stephen, but I do believe as a condition of approval, that'll be finalized with staff of mix of different, you know, unit types and locations throughout the building.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think those are all the clarifying questions. Oh, Board Member.
Sorry, I had one more question of staff. When I read, maybe, I didn't see it in the conditions, but when I read the Arborist report, there were a number of recommendations that the Arborists put forth on tree protection measures during construction. How are those incorporated into the conditions of approval or into the landscape plans?
Right. There is a condition of approval. Have to find where it went.
I might have missed it. So if you can.
Well, it's part of the Public Works Development Permit. And I'll verify that it's elsewhere in the conditions as well.
Okay. Yeah, if you could point that out. I scanned through it. I didn't see it. But then I could have missed it.
Okay, I'll make sure that that gets in there.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Do we have any online speakers?
Yeah, we have two online speakers.
Okay. Actually, let's start in the room, and then we'll maybe just go back and forth, if that's okay. The first person I have here is Eric Texa. We have three minutes.
Hopefully, I'll take less than that. My name is Eric Texa, Vice President of Development Blue Rise Ventures. We are the owners of the Research Park at Marina Village, which is basically all of the commercial space sort of to the south and east of the proposed project. It's about 1.3 million square feet of what was office space six years ago. We've since converted six to 700,000 of it to life science R&amp;D labs. We estimate on any given day, we have about 2,000 people working on site. Never done a formal survey of this, but we talked to a lot of people anecdotally. You know, most people don't live on the island. Some do, but most don't. And I just see a lot of synergies between high-density housing projects like this one, close to an employment center like ours, gives more people the opportunity to live next to where they work if they want to, provides extra funding for alternative transportation through the TMA. And for those reasons, you know, we as a, as an adjacent owner, support the project. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go online?
We'll start with Matt Regan. Matt, you're allowed to talk.
Good evening. Thank you. President Sisneris, Commissioners, my name is Matt Regan. I'm here representing the Bay Area Council of like 350 of the Bay Area's largest employers. And my job is to make sure that our region builds sufficient housing to accommodate our economic growth and the demands of our population. And we have not been doing a particularly good job of that of late. And so I'm here to support this project. And one thing that was not discussed much in tonight's deliberations is the fact that we are talking about 356 sorely needed homes for families in Alameda. So let's never lose sight of the fact that that's the North Star in all of this effort. The project is on a site that's zoned for housing by the City of Alameda. It's consistent with all of your zoning requirements and inclusionary housing requirements. It meets all state standards for streamlining and exemptions from CEQA. So your job is really to stop a developer from building something hideously ugly that violates your design standards. And it's clear that that's not the case. So we would urge that you move forward with this project with all haste and get these homes built. The housing crisis is not going away, and the people that need homes are, they are. 40,000 Californians leave this state every year for Texas. Our job as housing advocates is to make sure that we stop that tide. Thank you so much for your support. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mitch Ball.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so we are in a housing crisis. This has become a homelessness crisis and an affordability crisis. There are many people without homes, less so in Alameda, but they're definitely in Oakland. And, you know, with affordability, rents are extremely high. Many people my age may never be able to retire because they can't save up paying rent. I work right across from this lot. I often, during lunch, go to walk out to the water, passing this lot. It's mostly empty parking lot. So I'm happy to see that it will be used for better purposes. I'm really happy, you know, that we can build this tall, we can fit this many units on this size of lot. I, you know, I think the parking amount is, I wouldn't say it's entirely unreasonable. I would still say, you know, go forward with the project. The median household here in Alameda has one car. This has a slight bit more parking spots than units. Many of these are one bedrooms and studios, so I can see many of these units not having cars. And so I think some of those parking spots will remain unfilled. If, you know, it could be possible to reduce the number of parking spots, maybe reduce the parking garage by a level and fit in a few more units, would certainly be happy with that. But altogether, support the project because we need these units. We need these homes. And, yeah, ultimately, I think maybe some people might oppose this because they see more people on the island. They think traffic's bad. This will mean more cars. I think the opposite. If the homes don't get built here, they're going to get built in Tracy, an hour, two hours with traffic drive away from the jobs here in the Bay Area. That's going to contribute far more to traffic. These are homes where people don't necessarily need a car. They don't necessarily need to be filling the roads with their cars. You know, once it's built, you know, maybe one day I might live there. It's close to work. It'd be quite convenient. So, yeah, thank you. Let's get building.
Thank you. Next online speaker?
So next online, we have Rena Ranu. Rena, you are allowed to talk.
Hi, this is Rena Spazman, actually Victor. I just had a question for the builders. Don't know if this is the right form for it, but I'm just wondering about disassembly of the existing structure. When is that going to happen? What's the plan for it? How are we going to mitigate dust kicking up and noise? I live literally on the other side of the fence. I'm looking at the building right now. And so, yeah, that was just a front of mind for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next in-person speaker, Sharon Hackel.
Hello. I'm also a neighbor just to the west at the Symmetry Development. I've been living there and owning there for nine years. I'm also a former, excuse my voice, I'm also a former senior executive with Kaiser Permanente, the Clorox Company, and Telecare Corporation here in Alameda. I support the overall goals of the project. I would also like the, the goal of being a good neighbor to be part of, of the project as well. I'd like to request that the scope and scale of the building be reduced to be more in form and fitting with the neighborhood to a maximum height of 70 feet. As for the parking entrance, my understanding is that the parking entrance is on the south end on Mariner Square Loop, if I understand that correctly. I'd like to recommend that the parking entrance either be on the long side on Mariner Square Drive, across from the storage, or around to the north side to reduce the, the traffic pattern that's there with Target. And I mean, there's a, it's a substantial, if we're talking about 400 parking spaces, it's a substantial traffic congestion. There's a stoplight there. So I can just see a lot, lots of congestion happening there. As a neighbor, also, and just from the general neighborhood, the, the noise factor is certainly a consideration, both during the construction period as well as afterwards. So in the design element, I'd like to request that the, my understanding is that the rooftop deck is an open air deck. My request would, would be that it is a closed deck. In addition, that there is some type of hours of usage. So like 10:00 PM or something like that, so that it keeps the noise level down, especially at that high level with noise carrying. Looking at the Arborist report, I would request more shrubbery on the west side to further divide this, this complex from the Symmetry complex, as well as there's two existing trees on the northeast corner that I'd like to see maintained. That's closest to the retirement element. That the hours of construction be limited to eight to five on Monday through Friday. That there's window washing services provided, or at least budget provided for, by, by this development to our neighboring complex during the construction period. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And we don't have any more online speakers, right?
No more online speakers.
Okay, great. And we have one more in-person speaker, Lindy.
Oh, now we have one hand raised here.
Okay, I'll finish with that.
Hello, everybody. Can you guys hear me? I live in the Symmetry as well. I'm a neighbor to where this will be developed. And I just am really appalled that it's going to be such a high-rise. I think that that design will give us no privacy. It will look down on our little, three little levels. And, and we will have, we will be boxed in between this high-rise and then the other high-rises at Bay 37. And Symmetry was there first. And when it was built, we had no idea that these bigger buildings were coming and these high tall condos. And we can't match that. And there will be, and you can't have trees that high that can buffer that, really. And so I'd also like to say that, how about all the pets that everyone's going to have? I have one dog myself, and I know how much pet pickup I have to do with just one dog. That's going to be a lot, which brings me to the trash pickup. That's also going to be, how are they going to maintain and keep up with this new development? It's already stressing the city as from Bay 37. And as far as I know, Bay 37 is not yet filled. There's plenty of vacancies there. So why don't we work on filling the housing that we already have instead of building more and more and more? I've been in Alameda for 22 years, and I love this town. I really do. And a lot of people who are building don't live here. They don't have to see it all turn to concrete like I've seen over the last 22 years. And also, I think it's really sad if you think that we're going to believe that there's not going to be traffic, and there's not going to be pollution, and there's not going to be a lot of other things that come with a mass amount of people living right next door. Yes, there is a housing crisis. But can the people who you want to house even afford this place? It does look beautiful. The design looks pretty. But it doesn't belong at that corner for a high-rise. Also, and nobody has to live there but us. We know how much traffic there is. Even on the Sunday when they have the Antique Fair over by the base, at the base, there's so much traffic just coming down Mitchell Avenue off of Fifth Street and from the base that it's, it's packed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And our final online speaker?
Okay, so we have Yale Herrera Villar, and I will allow you to talk.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. And thank you, Board Members, for being here. I'd like, I'm also a community member and neighbor as well. And I'd like to echo and tag on to the previous two women who spoke before me. I would also like to request, for similar reasons, for a shorter building. Eight stories just seems so high for that particular area, especially because, as noted, most of the residential buildings in that area were at most, I think somebody said, were four stories. So it just seems residentially out of place. I would hate to, I don't live right at that, I think it's called Diller Street area. But if I was, just having all that towering down, as some of you spoke before, just doesn't seem like a neighborly thing to do. I agree with the movement or the request for movement for the parking as well. Just kind of ease, especially that transition right there by the two. I'm wondering about the assigned parking. The developer has said that people would need to pay extra to get parking from an equity standpoint, that just, I'm wondering if that could be. From an equity standpoint, that just, I'm wondering if that could be changed in some way or supplemented so that each unit could get one assigned parking spot. I'm wondering, oh, I also echo the sentiments about, worries about traffic in that area. Wondering what plans there are to help ease that. Also, most of the, or from what I saw from the plans, there's a lot of one-bedroom and less, and studio apartments. So the idea that these would be for families seems unreasonable to me. And even if it was, that would then most likely require at least one car for small children. So this just doesn't really seem to fit, in my opinion. And also echo the sentiment that these would not necessarily help low-income, except for maybe the 54, yes, but the rest, I don't see how that really addresses the affordability crisis. These seem to be, you know, luxury apartments, so I don't, that's not lost, I think, on the community of what that really is. I'm also wondering if the city has any plans to help with the current businesses that are there. I'd like to express a worry for small independent businesses that are currently running there and what options they would have if this was to be demolished. There are other vacancies in other new buildings that are remain vacant because the costs just don't align with what the current rents are at the current place. So I'm wondering if the city can supplement or has any plan to help the current businesses that are there. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have one more speaker, Dana.
Thank you for my late submission. My name's Dana. I'm also a neighbor on Diller Street with a few of my neighbors here, and just want to echo and support their comments here. I'm a newer homeowner, and I moved there about almost three years ago, and it's a really lovely community. I'm new to Alameda too, and really love a lot of what the city is doing. I'm very impressed by all of the things that I've seen over the last few years. But I am concerned about an eight-story building, considering that there's no other eight-story buildings in the vicinity at all, and none, and I don't know of very many in the entire island. All of the other communities, including our townhouse community, is three stories. I believe the neighboring, older community is two. So I really am concerned about how an eight-story building fits within this entire community and the impacts that that creates to neighbors, cleanliness, you know, all of the things that impact having this, this size of a building at this particular location. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much for your comment.
Just want to check one more time, is there anybody online that would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. Not seeing anybody raising their hands.
Okay, we'll go with that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. So thank you everyone so much for chiming in, for those thoughtful insights. I'll bring them back to the board for deliberations. Actually, I do have one question, so I wonder if I could, I'm going to jump in maybe for the first question. There, and it maybe it's tied to the design review piece, but I am also curious about the parking and what's in the purview of the board. Now, I was a little bit confused about the Caltrans lot. So that looks like it would be like a shared parking lot and used for overflow. If there, if it isn't being utilized necessarily for the residents, for their parking, I'm wondering if like, that could be used for some other different use in the future. So that's like one piece of the question. And yeah, I just wonder what considerations are there for reducing the parking lot? I noticed in the TDM, or the Transportation Analysis, that it didn't mention the O-line, which is nearby. It only mentioned the local bus services, and that does seem like a major commuter asset. And so I just wonder how much less reliance there is on cars and how that analysis is, is or isn't being incorporated into the programming for the parking spaces? So, I don't know if the staff wants to respond first, or the applicant?
Well, I'll just say, it hasn't really come up in terms of what the alternative use for the lot would be. As far as zoning is concerned, if it became a commercial lot where people could pay to park there, then that is typically a regulated use, and so there would be a use permit for that. So, you know, if they started having an operator with daily parking for whatever price, I don't know who would be using it, maybe local employees or something, or commuters, but like if it became a parking ride lot or something crazy like that, I mean, that, that would require a use permit. So right now, none of that is contemplated.
I'll maybe try to address these best I can. Yeah, as it relates to the, those as parking uses, and I'd say just a little bit on the, on the site layout to address some of the questions relative to entry points. As we've thought about it with our team and in coordination with staff, by having the garage entrance on one end and then the surface-level entrance that goes into Caltrans, we actually think that that's the best plan possible because you end up having two different vehicular entrances. So that helps offload putting it all onto one street. And then, as it relates to the, yeah, the parking, that, it's, it's our understanding through Caltrans that that surface lot cannot be repurposed. It's always been a lot since the tube has been there, and I don't, and I don't assume the tube is going to be going anywhere. So, so anyways, that's, being able to utilize that element for, I think, you know, traffic and additional parking is a, ends up being an overall benefit for, for various traffic and vehicular access concerns.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, Board Member Wang? Or, go ahead.
Thanks. Well, thank you to the project applicant team for their work thus far on the project proposal. Also appreciate the applicant taking the time to brief me last week on this. Also want to thank the community for coming out. It's clear that everyone who's spoken today really cares about their neighborhood and their community. So, thank you for coming out. This, this project, I think, is a, is a testament, I wasn't here, but it's a testament to the hard work that staff and this body did on the housing element. So it's super exciting to see a, a big housing element project come, come before us. It's, it's nice to see it come to fruition, in particular in our current development climate. We got a couple questions on this, so I just wanted to have an opportunity, I think, to clarify with staff. So in the staff report, Stephen, you do note this, that under state law, we cannot reduce the density of this project unless we meet certain conditions. Are those conditions the, the health and safety provisions that you mentioned before, or are they something else?
It would be the health and safety provisions in state law.
Okay. Thank you. We've also heard some comments on parking. I, I think as far as parking, it should be noted, at least from my perspective, that at, on this project, we are looking at one-to-one bike parking. So we're, what we're seeing is that this project is, is providing bike parking far in excess of the vehicular parking supply that they've proposed, even though they are allowed under code to provide a lot more vehicular parking. So I, I will just say that I've, I've been pushing a lot on, on off-street parking in these chambers recently, and we, we had a robust debate on that, on, on another project. But here, we are not seeing a project that's proposing even what is allowed under code. We're seeing a project that's proposing well over 100 spaces fewer than what's allowed in code, I think. I'm, I'm pretty happy with that. I'm, I'm happy to support this project overall, and I hope that the applicant will be able to build it expediently, depending on what happens tonight.
Thank you. Board Member Louise?
Again, I want to echo Board Member Wang's comments and appreciate the community coming out, either spoke for or against the project. I think this shows that the public process is working. It also highlights that, I think, some of us may not be familiar with our local George, local codes and what is allowed within this board's purview. Just, just kind of, I would like to use this opportunity to clarify a few things just for everybody. And one, just want to clarify, this is a rental project and this is not a for-sale condo, correct? Okay, let the record reflect that. The applicant confirmed that this is a rental project, so it's not a for-sale condo project. Secondly, often we unbundle the parking, not from an equity standpoint, but it's to advocate residents to use alternative, alternative means other than just driving a car. That's why we unbundle parking, and that is being the, the direction that the city has to be moving towards. That's why the parking and apartment, we're encouraging our developers to do that, to unbundle the two, so that if a resident realizes they have to pay extra for that extra car, maybe they'll figure out that, you know, maybe they can get away with just one car, and so thus reduce the parking demand. That's the reason behind that. And also thoroughly, one speaker mentioned about business relocation, what happens to the existing business. That is not the purview of this board, and we cannot comment on that. So then getting into the project, also, in terms of the pool deck operations, the noise concerned, I believe that needs to be compliance with our local noise ordinance. So I think that is covered, and we don't need to add additional information unless it's in violation of the local Alameda's noise ordinance, and we do have one. And so, I did hear a recommendation about window washing for the neighbor buildings during construction. That is a concern, and I have seen other projects done that. So I would like to request that as a conditions of approval that the developer work with the neighbor to provide facade, washing of their windows during construction, maybe at the end of the construction. Okay? And I appreciate the clarification on the, on the Webster tube because initially I was going to ask for street trees being planted on that parking lot as well, just to, you know, mitigate urban heat island effect. But that doesn't seem to be feasible. Speaking of sustainability, on the south facade, I understand that we have some large trees that is being maintained, and I appreciate that. I think that will provide some sunshades for the units behind them. There are some units on the southwest side, closer to the Webster tube, that have smaller trees. I would like you to work with the staff and see if you can incorporate some sunshades to provide some shading, mitigate heat gain for that facade. So those are my comments, and I appreciate you working, trying to provide articulation on, on the building. I know the purview of this board is we have to review the project according to the objective design review standards. So, although I appreciate a lot of the comments, that is, you know, the state has a mandate, the project complies with zoning code, we can only comment if the building is really ugly, then we can comment on it, but I think overall, the developer did a really good job, so. So I can support the project with those conditions.
Board Member Hong?
Yeah, thank you. I, I support the project too, because I understand what the state law is, and, you know, it does comply with our general plan or zoning ordinances, the design review standards. So, the key is the design review conditions. Now, one of the things, and perhaps staff would clarify, the resolution does ask us to make two exemption findings, the Class 32 exemption as well as the design review exemption. And staff mentioned that we don't have to make the Class 32 exemption, but I can make that exemption, and actually, that's kind of why I kind of asked some of the questions that I did, because part of that exception is to verify that there are not any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, and water quality. And based on the technical studies, I believe that the applicant has demonstrated that those, based on those studies, no significant effects would occur with the condition of approval that included with the, with the, with the application. So I can make the Class 32 exemption. I do have some, I do respect the residents who came by tonight to express their concern about the project. So I was thinking, what can we do within the parameters of these fine review applications to kind of minimize those impacts? I totally support Board Member Louise's comment, I was going to add about the offering of window cleaning. I've seen that as a condition for large projects. The, the other condition is, I know, I know that for these large sites, when there's a lot of demolition, sometimes there's a need for factor control that, that sometime migrates over to adjacent properties. So I would recommend a condition, having the developer responsible for factor control if needed, but that's a common complaint that I've experienced over years for large sites that are fully demolished. The other thing is, I totally understand the limitation on street tree planting in, underneath the tube. I would encourage the staff to ensure the tree species along the building facing the, facing the residence, or as large species as possible, perhaps a large box specimens, you know. But there's another item I'd like to kind of offer, and I'll throw it out there. And I've seen that as a condition also for certain projects where there's limitations on tree planting. Usually the most effective tree planting are those right adjacent to the residences, not next to the building, because the, next to the building has, as applicant mentioned, has, not one of the residents mentioned, has a little effect. I noticed that along the border of the residential units, there's these open parking bays, probably to the garages of the units, and not, not making a requirement, but having the developer work with the Jason Home Association to see if there's ability to plant some additional trees on, within that residential project's boundary to provide additional buffer to further mitigate the view of the structure from the project. So I want to offer that as condition, not a requirement, but request that the developer work with the homeowners if they are open to considering tree planting along their property line. So those are the conditions, otherwise, I support the project. I agree, we are in a housing crisis, we do need significantly more housing, you know. I wish there would be a higher percentage of affordable housing units for a project of this size, but it does comply with the ordinance, so I think we have limited leeway to, to require above what our current requirements are.
Thank you. Board Member, our Vice President Arisa?
Thank you. Thank you to the committee for coming out and for your comments. And thank you for my fellow board members for going ahead and proposing some of the things that I think will help. I, I also support this project. I think, you know, it's within the zoning requirements, and that is what we are reviewing, is just the design of the building. There were, there are two comments that I want to make. For, for a project that is this size, which is really like a whole block, a building that is this scale, I, I worry a little bit about the experience as a pedestrian. And for me, I think most, the, the front elevation, like on the, what is that? Well, on the south and the east seems to be designed, you know, to scale it down. But on the west, where there is no openings, I see there's is no openings, I see there's like recessed walls only, but not actual openings with windows or any sort of transparency. I'm wondering if the applicant would consider treating those recesses with some other material that would maybe be something more transparent. I'm talking about the, you know, the ground floor where the bike and the electrical and kind of the utility rooms are. And I appreciate the landscaping plan, because it does help soften the building, but I think that particular facade and that side of the street would be, I mean, it's a very long building. It's basically joining four lots into one, so the scale of it is massive. So I appreciate what has been done on the other facades of, you know, breaking up the massing and creating the recesses of the balconies and the projections of the balconies. I'm just wondering if there is something that can be done on that level, on the west facade. And I think that the interior is not under our purview, but I will offer a question also on the interior corridors. It seems like the corridors are very, very long, and I'm also wondering if there's a way to create some breaks or recess the doors or something, just for the comfort of navigating the corridors. But I do support this project, and I hope the applicant can complete it in time and it gets built soon. Thank you.
And with that, it's my turn. Yes, I echo my fellow board members that I'm excited that our intense housing element process has culminated to one of these great projects. We put a lot of effort into that so we could encourage new neighbors and new housing. We recognize our housing crisis, and so I do think this is a great addition to our community. And, you know, I did bring up some questions related to the parking. I was nodding my head with some of the public comments that were brought up. Our maximum, I think, is 1.5 for our parking ratio, and I agree, it's not a deal breaker. So I just do encourage the applicant to really activate and utilize the TDM program that they put together and try to encourage all those alternative uses, including the O-line, which again, wasn't mentioned in the analysis or in the staff report, but other than that, I wholeheartedly support this project with the conditions that my board members brought up. So with that, does someone want to make a motion? Yes, Board Member Hong?
Yeah, sure. I'll move to approve the design review with both the Class 32 category of exception, as recommended by staff in the resolution, as well as the design review exception, and with the conditions that are outlined, that have been outlined by this board discussion. I did have just one additional minor amendment, if I may, is condition number 99. I did see that that's where the tree protection plan is, so thank you, staff, for that, but if you could also have it referenced in compliance with the Arbor's report.
Yes, thank you for catching that. It ended up being broken into a bunch of little sections rather than one paragraph, so it was hard to find, but it's there, and I'll add reference to the Arbor's report.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll also add reference to the window washing to perhaps bigger trees along the west facade, if possible, vector control during demolition, working with the adjacent HOA to see if they would also be open to more tree planting, and the both CEQA exemptions.
Sorry, Planning Director. We also want to add sunshades on the south side, and did you add window washing during construction already?
Yes.
Okay, so then also work with the architect to add some sunshades on the south side, south facade.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Sunshades, okay.
Yeah, all those conditions sound fine to me for the resolution.
Okay.
Board Member Wang?
Can I just, I just want to clarify something, because I think I inadvertently introduced maybe some confusion into the record. So I think that the bike parking on this project is one-to-one with the unit count, and the vehicular parking is something like 1.2 to 1, including the Caltrans lot. So I had said, I think, that the bike parking was in excess of vehicular, but I don't think that's true, so just wanted to clarify that, that I see staff is nodding, okay? I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay, great. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seen? Okay, great, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I also, I just also want to really thank the public also for coming, and I just really appreciate the attention to this project and sharing your opinion, so many thanks.
And I can just clarify as well, this decision is final unless appealed or called for review within 10 days.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6, Staff Communications.
Under 6A, we have two recent actions that are in your packet, and under 6B, you get the month of August off, as usual, so we won't see you again until sort of the middle of September, and we'll notify you of agenda items ahead of time.
We'll go ahead and close Agenda Item 6 and move on to Agenda Item 7, Board Communications. Board Member Ruiz?
Hi, so this is for staff. It's been brought to my attention that we may need to revisit our ADU ordinance. I've heard from the community members, community members, that sometimes the ADU project is denied, especially when it has decks on them, and when the reasons were changed several times, when a reason of denial was given, and the applicant, you know, responded saying that ordinance doesn't apply, and then another ordinance would be cited, tried to deny a project. And we, as a city, should be clear on what our regulation is, not finding rules to deny a project, but understand the rules and say, does this apply, does this not apply? So I will ask that maybe we should review that, or just kind of, don't find rules to deny a project, but understand what the rules are, so everybody can play in the same playing field. That's the feedback I was getting from the community, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we're aware of the situation where the state law keeps changing, and so we need to dovetail our different ordinance sections to fit, and so we're working on that.
Yeah, so maybe I would like to see that brought back again, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
And then, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
And with the latest CEQA ruling, I think it would be good for staff to prepare like a briefing to the planning board as well with the new CEQA law.
Yeah, we have a lot of updates, and so we're going through that with the city attorney and thinking about strategically what can we accomplish in chunks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board Member Hong?
Yeah, Board Member Ruiz brought up the exact same question I had with, there's been a lot of buzz in the planning circles regarding AB 130, which is the new CEQA exemption for most residential projects. So my understanding is it goes into effect immediately when the governor signs the new budget bill. So it'd be interesting, since it goes into effect immediately, to provide us update on how this new law affects CEQA review for future projects that will be coming before our board, and that might, since there's a lot of projects that might be affected, it almost seems like the sooner the better, we could get brief on that issue. I know there's probably a lot of questions about what it means, but it's a big change in CEQA, probably the most significant change in CEQA in the last 15 or 20 years.
Yeah, I actually just sat in on a webinar at lunch today, so, and the Alameda County Planning Directors' monthly meeting, and, you know, we bring you exempt projects all the time, and so we have lots of options, as we did tonight, on which exemption we apply. Sometimes they come with strings attached in terms of labor or other parameters or requirements, so I think we have pretty good luck with the Class 32, because we're an urban environment, but we're also looking at those others. If a developer wants to use one, then we would especially consider it, because they're sort of looking for their easiest path as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking it may not affect Alameda as much, because we do use quite a bit the CEQA exemption versus some other cities may feel less, you know, less inclined to use it, but with the new state law, it kind of forces everyone to kind of be on the same page, so it'd be interesting how it changes how we're approaching our CEQA review for projects. Tonight is kind of a good example.
Any other board communications? No, thanks for bringing that up. I have a small one from today's review. It was mentioned that there isn't an open space requirement for multifamily, our multi-family zoning, and I just wonder, you know, how do we feel about that as a board? Because it seems like maybe it's an oversight or not, and it seems like, so for applicants, I don't know, I guess in tonight's case, like, the market is driving like what open spaces they would incorporate into the project, but I just thought I'd lift that up as maybe something that, yeah, I wonder if we want to take a look at that in some shape or form.
I can clarify, so in the multi-family combining district, it refers to the underlying district for its development standards, so that's where the disconnect is. If you're in an industrial zone like this, they don't have open space standards, because they weren't anticipating residential at the time. Now with the multi-family, we're sort of allowing multi-family, but we have kind of very loose development standards, so that there's a little bit of a disconnect. I did research this when you brought it up. In fact, they are providing 30 square feet of common open space and about 20 to 30 square feet of private open space per unit, so it actually works out according to the general code requirements, so it's sort of like the market actually does drive pretty much what the code requires.
Yeah.
For most other residential projects.
Yeah, and I just wonder how many use cases are there where it's like the underlying zoning didn't account for it, and so, yeah, anyways, not something for us to spend too much time on. Oh, yeah, Board Member Hong?
Yeah, I just thought I had, I do remember this discussion occurred when we're going through the general plan and housing element update, as well as the zoning ordinance update, and the decision at that time was to keep the open space requirement kind of flexible, so not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Minimum requirement and allow for flexibility for, say, group open space versus private open space, allow it to be market-driven. But then there was also discussion that, you know, open space requirements is common, that housing developers, if they qualify for density bonus, state density bonus, that's one of the common waivers, the exceptions they ask for anyway. So even we had that as a standard by state law, if they requested it and they qualify, they can request a waiver based on economic hardship or to buy the balconies or whatever, and quite honestly, is a fairly, you know, lenient standard.
Yeah, and just finally, I think a lot of developments are part of a development plan that's in multi-phases, and we get shoreline improvements and private and public parks, and so we are flexible, because there are different situations, and this one happens to be a tight site, but they still provide a fair amount of community open space.
Yeah, okay.
And I do remember, wasn't there 100% affordable housing project that asked for waiver of the balconies too, as part of the state density bonus allowance, so what's argued is a hardship case to provide those balconies.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you for the reminder on that. Yeah, that works for me. Like, I wasn't even sure, it's like, is this an issue? I just thought I'd bring it up, so, yeah, thanks for that. Great, going back to our agenda, we'll go ahead and close board communications. We have non-agenda public comments. Anyone would like to speak on an item that wasn't presented this evening? Any speakers online?
No speakers online.
Okay, and seen none in person, we'll go ahead and close that, and we are adjourned. Thank you.